Oh, two. So I will call the regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council together this, the 8th of January 2019. I will call this to order. Wendy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening, at least for the council, I think there's some sadness, and for another individual, there may be some happiness, and for a family sitting in the back, they get their dad back. But we, this evening, are going to take a moment to recognize Councilman Alan Rudin for his years of service on the council and to the city. And I've got a proclamation that, as mayor, I have the ability to do in special occasions. And so, Alan, I'm not going to come down to you, we don't have the roll being mic, but I'm going to read a proclamation, okay? Whereas Councilor Rudin was elected as a city councillor for Ward 2 and served two four-year terms beginning December of 2011, and whereas Councilor Rudin has volunteered for and served on the City of McMinnville Planning Commission as the Airport Commission liaison, Affordable Housing Committee member representing the building community and numerous other city and community committees, task forces with assignments, and whereas Councilor Rudin is an individual that listens to the facts, is a critical thinker, and when he speaks, we all listen to his wise and thoughtful comments. And whereas Councilor Rudin's passion to serve the community is admirable, I've heard him say that this community has given me and my family so much, it's now time for me to give back. And whereas Councilor Rudin is a Linfield College graduate and has served the community for decades, and whereas Councilor Rudin serves with a kind and gentle spirit, and whereas Councilor Rudin is widely known for his business acumen, quality work, being fair and honest, having served this community for over 30-plus years as a contractor, a land developer of quality neighborhoods and residential homes, and whereas Councilor Rudin has represented the building community well within McMinnville and has been a strong advocate for livability, and whereas Councilor Rudin's family has been a strong support system to him over his many years of service, and whereas Councilor Rudin's sense of service and commitment to the community is valued by the citizens of the City of McMinnville, therefore, I, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim January 8, 2019, as Alan Rudin Day. And that is in the City of McMinnville and urge citizens to reflect on the passion, the leadership of his caring and community-minded as a councillor. In witness thereof, I have herefore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed to this on the 8th day of January 2019. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. And then, in just honor of what you've accomplished, Alan, we have a plaque that honors and thanks Alan Rudin for years of dedicated professionalism, loyalty, and outstanding service to the citizens of McMinnville as a city councillor, January 2011 through December 2018, and presented by the City of McMinnville. And so we will give that to you. I'm going to do a couple of things, just going to share some personal thoughts initially, and then we'll turn it over to the council for each of you to have an opportunity. Myself and my family moved to McMinnville in 1992. I think Alan was, outside of individuals at work, the first person I really had gotten to know in the community. And as a builder, I went to him and we were looking for a home, and I just said, "Help me understand this community," and we spent many hours sitting down and talking and looking at options. And really, I felt immediately of his warmth and his desire to be helpful. And he has been a dear friend all of that time, and it has been such a wonderful, personal feeling to be able to serve with Alan for these years. We had an opportunity, I guess it was 14 years ago, we had a councillor leave unexpectedly off the council, and we had two individuals that were from Ward 2 at that time. We had Alan Rudin, we had Kelly Menke, and we were over in the school district's boardroom because that's where we met, and I happened just to be a member of the budget committee, and I was there making a presentation to the school district on some budget information. And I had an opportunity to hear both Alan and Kelly talk about why they wanted to serve and fulfill the term of a city councillor. And that's where I heard Alan give this information. He says, "This community has given me and my family so much, it is time for me to give back." And it hit a chord in my heart because I felt the same way. This community is one that gives so very, very much. And so, we see one another often, Alan, but I'm going to miss the ability to see you as often as we have in council and committee work, but know that your mind and your heart is still so committed to this community. Thank you for the impressions and the leadership and the example that you've given me over the many years. And so what I'd like to do is now just open it up to any member of the council and staff, if anyone would like just to share a few thoughts.
Alan, I came to know you as a young boy when your daughter Megan and I went to Memorial together. But from a council perspective, I really appreciated the wisdom that you shared, the level-headedness, the unbiased approach, even if it was personally maybe not what you agreed with, you looked at it from a citywide perspective, and I was always really appreciative, and it'll be missed, and I appreciate everything you've done for the city.
It's been a pleasure getting to sit next to you for the last four years, and I'm going to miss you tremendously. I remember quite clearly at my first council meeting, there was something that I strongly disagreed with, and the council seemed to be going in favor, and you leaned over and encouraged me to vote in a way that seemed most right to me, and since that time have always encouraged me, and you've always been a wonderful counterpoint. I've always looked to you as a mentor in terms of how to conduct oneself as a councillor. And in serving with you on the Affordable Housing Task Force, I've seen the outpour of respect from the building community that no doubt reaches far beyond the walls of this chamber. So it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you so much.
And I'm probably one of the newer members, being newer to town and also newer to the city council, I haven't had the opportunity to get to know Alan as well as some of the others. But one thing that I think is really inspiring for me with regards to Alan is the thoughtfulness with which he listens to everything that is happening, and we can always count on him to just really listen to all of the sides, and he's so compassionate that when he makes points, it really is full of wisdom, and so I will really miss him, his leadership here on the council. And his stories are amazing. He's touched almost everything in town, and he has a story about everything, and it's been really fun to hear those stories, so hopefully I'll still get to hear those stories in other ways, in other venues. Thank you.
Well, I've known you for a while, Alan. We've had a business relationship over the years, although that no longer necessarily holds true. I've enjoyed serving with you on the council tremendously. I know you've had significant impact on decisions I've made here, and I know others have appreciated your wisdom and insight. I think one of the most telling things about an individual, and Scott alluded to it in his proclamation, is although I don't know all of them well, your family obviously honors you, and their acts within the community speak highly of you. So, you know, you obviously have a tremendous impact on them and the community, and it's just been wonderful to work with you. And I hope to continue to see you, here and there and everywhere. At any rate, I wish you the best.
We still have him on speed dial.
Yeah, we still have you on speed dial, and anything real estate I will consult you on. Oh, by the way, excellent addition you did for us, too.
Any other comments from members of staff that...
Mayor, I'd like to say a couple of things. I've known Alan for just about two years. I want to express my appreciation for the personal and professional support you've shown for me, Alan, but also the whole organization. For those of you who don't know, I lived in a Rudin home for about four weeks when I first got here. I'm glad his son was living out of state, so was available as a vacation rental. If we had sold the Springfield house sooner and made fewer repairs, we might have ended up living in a Rudin home as well for a longer period of time. I will say, I think I've gotten fewer emails from Alan than any elected official I've ever worked with. But also still appreciate your engagement. One of the characteristics that I see in you always, Alan, is an abiding care and compassion, and I really appreciate that about what you have brought to this table and what you've brought to the community, and it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm just going to recognize the family in the back, and they're not all here, but we've got a number that are here. And Judy, thank you for your support. I mean, our spouses go unheralded in their support and the efforts that we do, but we couldn't do it without our spouses, and so thank you so very much. And then I think what I'll do is turn some time over to Alan just to share a thing or two, or if you want to introduce your family, whatever you want to do.
I'll proudly introduce them back there. This is just a small portion of my family. I have six children, Judy and I have six children, we have 21 grandchildren, 14 of which live in the city, and some of them are here, and some of our children are here. And I'd like to introduce Leslie Lavanger, from the left to right, her husband Ben, who works with our organization with the hat on, Nathan Rudin, maybe you've seen his excellent photograph as an incoming physician in McMinnville, he's been here about six months working. He's my next oldest son, Kami, his beautiful wife, and the mother of their two children, one of which is Joel, he's waving, and he's an excellent singer, if you ever get a chance, he's an all-state singer as a six-year-old. He takes after his mother and his dad. His brother is the toe head, Alex. Also here is Allison, my middle daughter, and with her is, to her right is Juniper or Junie, and to her left is Jonas, and back there, raise your hand, that's Sam. There are a number of streets in McMinnville named after those kids. That's a prerogative. As a developer, we have to take so much crud from the staff, we get to name our own streets, so that's one of the perks. Oh, there's also Peyton Rudin, is Ryan Rudin's youngest daughter. She's on the far left over there with the long blonde hair, and she just waved. And Zach is hiding, he's, oh, and Brian, okay. Zach's just waved, and then Brian Rudin has a black hat off on the corner, he's my oldest son and a business partner. Did I get everybody? All right. Thank you for being here. And of course Judy, you introduced, yes, she is. Couldn't do it without her, she's a great support at home, and even though she hasn't been here that much, she's been interested and let me know her opinion on some issues, so.
Any parting words, Alan?
No, the only parting words is that we have a strong community, there's agreement on that for sure. It's grown in many different ways. I'm very, 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 very proud of what we've accomplished in the last eight to 10 years, and that's because we have good teamwork, good consensus-making and good chemistry. It goes a long way for accomplishing things. I think it's a starting point for getting things done, is respecting each other, I think that goes a long way. We've also got a young councillor, Zach Geary, who's going to be taking over, and he actually wants to be on the city council, if you can imagine that. Zach, I totally support. I've watched him grow over the last four years or longer, and he's got great experience on the planning commission, and again, he wants to be a city councillor, so I'll say that again. That's not everybody that wants to step up and do that because he believes in McMinnville. And so I think the city's in good hands with our capable council that we have right now. And Sal, I don't see Sal.
He's excused tonight, but we swore him in this morning, so he is renewed for his four-year term.
And Sal won a great race with two other very accomplished candidates, and he won a tight race there. So I think the city council is in great shape. I think we need to just keep doing what we're doing, rely on each other's support and help, and be willing to lend an ear to everybody who has something to say, and things will go along well, and then I'm going to be serving on different things once I get back from Mexico next month.
Well, we're going to break for about 10 to 15 minutes and have a reception. We have cookies and coffee and punch back there, giving us an opportunity to personally thank Alan, those in the audience, staff and councillors, and so we'll go ahead and just break for 10 to 15 minutes. Next on our agenda tonight is the oath of office for two of our councillors, Councilor Remy Drabkin continuing on, Councilor Zach Geary, and then, as I indicated, Sal was not able to be with us this evening, so we had an opportunity, David, to swear him in this morning, and so that's been taken care of. And so I will have Remy and Zach, you just want to do it from here, or...
Yeah, so they each have the oath of office in front of them. I've spoken to both of them, they've assured me they know how to read, and so rather than repeating after me, they're simply going to read their oath into the record. We'll start with Councilor Drabkin.
Secret's out in the meeting, huh? I, Remy Drabkin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Oregon, and that I will, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of the office of councillor of the City of McMinnville during my continuance therein, so help me God.
Councilor Geary.
I, Zach Geary, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Oregon, and that I will, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of the office of the councillor of the City of McMinnville during my continuance therein, so help me God.
And as city attorney, I will affirm that both councillors have taken the oath of office and are qualified to serve.
On the record, right?
Yep.
Our next item of business this evening is the election of council president, and every odd year, which would be every two years, we elect a council president, and that is to be elected by the body of the council. I'm just going to share a thought, and then, I don't vote, so I sit back. I have given some strong thought, and I would suggest for the council to discuss, our current council president, Kelly Menke, to remain for two years, with the number of current issues that we have on the table, and how Kelly and I try to go to almost every committee meeting and representing us, and the two of us being retired, it gives us a little more opportunity to do that. So I just throw that on the table, but it is the discussion and the decision of the council, and so I will open this up to a discussion among the council and look for a motion to come forward, and we can then vote on that. So I'm going to sit back and just let you five have a discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that you're correct, the broad number of committees and that need attention and are so active right now, as we're so lucky to have so many hard-working committees, and the in-depth work for the council president, that it would be befitting to reelect Councilor Menke to that position.
Any further discussion?
I concur. I think you guys are a dynamic duo, that you're doing great work, and Kelly is so involved, she really has been doing a great job as council president, and I'd like to see her continue for another couple of years.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I would concur and be very happy to have Kelly as our council president. I appreciate your leadership, and it's been great to sit next to her when I get the chance.
Okay, I think we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'd like to move to nominate Councilor Menke as council president.
Okay, we have a motion, and then a second, so Remy, and then Adam has seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by saying nay. The decision is unanimous, and Kelly, another two years. Thank you. This takes us to our point in the agenda this evening of an invitation for citizens to make comments, and the citizens may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. We limit those comments to three minutes, and we have a sign-up, and I haven't seen any sheets come in today, but is there anyone that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will move forward. Tonight we have a number of resolutions, and our first, excuse me, we have a consent agenda, and this evening, we have a request from the Andrew Minor Wine LLC for a winery first location at O L C C liquor license located at 475 Northeast 17th Street. Is there anyone that would like to take this item off the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying... Go ahead.
Oh, we've got a second.
Excuse me. We consider a request from Los Margaritas Mexican Restaurant LLC for a full on-premise commercial L O C C liquor license located at 1310 Northeast Baker Street. So would anyone like to take any of those items off the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by indicating nay? Thank you. That now takes us to resolution, resolution number 2019-01, first resolution of the new year, a resolution authorizing the approval of a cooperative fund exchange agreement between the City of McMinnville and the Oregon Department of Transportation, known as ODOT, known as the 2018 Fund Exchange Agreement Number 33147. And so, Mike, I think you're going to address that for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the very brief staff report that's in your packet, as well as the proposed resolution, a copy of the proposed fund exchange agreement, and a copy of our original loan agreement related to the Oregon Transportation Investment Bank loan, Infrastructure Bank loan for the city's share of the bypass project. This fund exchange resolution is second in what will be a number of fund exchanges that will happen over the term of the loan agreement. Per the loan agreement, we're able to exchange our federal dollars, one-for-one with state money to cover our loan principal and interest payments. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend that the council adopt the resolution approving the fund exchange agreement.
Mike, I know in your package you looked at the total indebtedness and how much we're looking at on an annual basis, so all of that information was a part of the packet. I'll open it up for questions for Mike or council discussion. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve resolution 2019-01.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by Wendy and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution number 2019-0 has passed unanimously, five to zero. That takes us to consider resolution 2019-2, and this is a resolution authorizing the release of a existing storm drainage easement located in the City of McMinnville, Yamahow County, Oregon. And Mike, I'll turn that for explanation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, there is a brief staff report in your packet that outline the reasons for this request, as well as the proposed resolution, and copies of the existing easement we're releasing, as well as the new easement that's been granted over the new alignment. The owner of the property at 624 Southwest Drumwood is redeveloping the property and constructing 27 townhomes. As part of the redevelopment, they're relocating an existing public storm mainline and have granted an easement over that new alignment. The release of the old easement will allow for the efficient development of the property and a placement of some of the townhomes. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. I know at Water and Light, I had an opportunity to work on this, some of the easements of utilities in that area also, and signed that on Monday. So we'll ask any questions of Mike on this issue. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve resolution 2019-2.
So moved.
Again.
And so Remy has moved, and Kelly has seconded.
No, no, Adam.
Adam has seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And so resolution 2019-2 passes unanimously, five to zero. We're going to consider resolution 2019-3, a resolution awarding a contract amendment two for professional services for the water treatment facility, treatment and disinfection... and disinfection, disinfection project number 2017-2. Mike, we'll turn that over to you also.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There is a brief staff report in your packet, as well as proposed resolution and the contract scope amendment that is before you. You will recall that at your November 13th meeting, you awarded a construction contract to Stettler Supply for the construction of the tertiary filter and UV system improvements at the treatment plant. CH2M Hill was our design consultant that carried us through bidding. This contract amendment allows them to provide construction services for us for the project, including project management, services during construction, project closeout, commissioning, training, and warranty work. Unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution awarding the contract amendment to CH2M Hill.
Okay. Mike, I was just looking at the figure of the water treatment area, and we have the basins and the clarifiers, and then we have the one that's up top that has dotted lines around. Is that the one that we just put into commission about a year ago, or is that one that's coming at a later date, all to the kind of the left of the project that we've been talking about?
Sure, you're absolutely correct, Mayor. And this figure is out of the preliminary design work. It was related to the treatment plan expansion project that was completed, that added the third aeration basin and the third secondary clarifier. So this is the next large project that was in our wastewater capital plan, and that's to improve the final piece of treatment, the tertiary filters, as well as upgrade the UV system, which is outdated and no longer, we're having difficulty finding parts for that existing system.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion among the council? Hearing none, then, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution 2019-4, excuse me, -3.
So moved.
So moved. It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2019-3 passes unanimously five to zero. This next takes us to resolution 2019-4, the appointment of Jerry Hart, Cherry Haas, and Leanna Guttner as representatives to the City of McMinnville Budget Committee. And Kelly and I and Marcia had an opportunity to really have a really in-depth interview process with a number of candidates. We had many more candidates than, we had positions that were available. And so, we brought members on that bring financial acumen to the table, have a desire to serve. And so, Kelly, any additional thoughts that you might have?
I just think these particular candidates are remarkably qualified and really look forward to working with them.
Great. If we have, if Cherry is here, and if Leanna is here, if they'd stand. We have the two with us, and Jerry Hart, who's been on the committee for a long time, was not able to be with us tonight, so thank you, ladies. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve resolution 2019-4.
I so move.
Second. And it has been moved by, it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Zach. And know the first meeting that you got involved. You got to jump quickly.
You guys are fast.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-4 passes unanimously five to zero. Now, this is, a few individuals are very excited about the next resolution. I can see three, and all of us are really, but resolution 2019-5 is a resolution awarding a bid for the Northwest Neighborhood Park, project number 201511. So this has been four years in the makings, you guys, and it's exciting. And so, Susan, I'm going to turn this over for you to give a report to the council.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm Susan Muir, the Parks and Rec Director, and I'm pretty happy to be here tonight with this resolution item, as I know many people are. I was speaking with Councilor Garvin before the meeting started, and this actually, the concept of this park was about a decade old, to bring a barrier-free inclusive playground to McMinnville. So that coincided with our master plan, which talked about a neighborhood park in the northwest area, which then led to acquisition of some acreage, which then led to some neighborhood planning, and it really is a project that has had a lot of people touching it. As a reminder, the funding for this park comes from both the bond and SDC money. We had Collins money, Collins Foundation money of $60,000 in it, the Kiwanis, both the international and the local Kiwanis gave quite a bit of money, $115,000 locally and $15,000 from the international foundation. We had $25,000 from the Oregon Community Foundation. Sunrise Rotary gave some money to this. We had small individuals writing checks for this project to get it going. We had $25,000 from the Ford Family Foundation, and we had a $275,000 state grant to get this park going. And as you all know, we went out to bid in May of last year, and we timed it very poorly, I think, with the market and what was happening, and we also had too, a little too much in the park. We went back to the drawing board after all of the bids were too high for our budget. They were well outside what we had, and we right-sized some things, including, one of the biggest things we did is we reduced the, some of the grading in the park, so it's now a little bit more flat than it had been. We had quite a bit of infrastructure to support some of the paths and other things. And we also downsized the restroom facility, which came in, I think, four times what our engineer's estimate was back in May, so we really went back to the drawing board. We took two proposals to the neighborhood in October to get their feedback, and also the Kiwanians. We invited them to the neighborhood meeting as well to really help us figure out what the right size was for particularly the playground development, and came up with the design that went out to bid. I was happy to see the bids that came in. We are under, the engineer's estimate for the construction of this was $925,000, and as you all see by the staff report and the proposed resolution in front of you, CNM excavation came in with our add alternates at $807,068. That's within our budget, and we are ready to recommend that you approve the resolution and send us forward to construction.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you for the report. It was very thorough with the dollars, but also letting us know what that design's going to look like, given the dollars we have to spend. So I'll open up for councilors for any comments or questions of Susan.
Well, I know Sal's going to be really sad not to be here tonight, but whoopee.
Well, and very, very much needed in that northwest part of our community, and as we look at the Baker Creek's south developing, we'll have a park there as homes are coming on. We'll have a number of scattering of mini parks up in that northern quartile to offset that higher density home, but this is going to be a great location, and as we talked about, more accessibility, I think, than any other of our other parks in the city.
If I could add one thing to that, Mayor, that this is really the future of the parks for McMinnville, where we've really looked at people with all abilities and getting everybody to the same park and the same playground. So it's exciting to see this roll out as our vocabulary of parks in McMinnville.
Remy, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I was just going to say that this has been, the whole process of this park coming together has been an inspiring one, to see so much community collaboration, and happy that it's coming here to this next step.
Thank you.
Can't wait for the shovels to hit the dirt.
A lot of, we should do a lot of celebrating.
We'll make sure we do a lot of that.
So I'll ask for a motion to approve resolution 2019-05.
So moved.
It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Remy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-5 passes unanimously five to zero. This takes us to our last resolution of this evening. It's not least, it's maybe one of the most exciting resolutions that we will be discussing, and that's resolution 2019-6, a resolution adopting the Mac Town 2032 Strategic Plan, which we've received and have been working on, and now have a final, it's not a draft, but after tonight, it will be our final. So Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You have seen this plan as it has evolved over the course of the last full year. For those who may be watching, and for those in attendance, let me just summarize the process briefly. The council believed that it was important to pursue the strategic plan as a way to ensure that this community continues to evolve and grow and stay a wonderful and magical place, not just for those of us who are here now, but those of us who will follow. We want to recognize that we stand on the shoulders of giants, great leaders in this community, for decades have helped make this a great place, and we want to fulfill the role that they have given us in this great community, and we feel like this plan is a way to do that. We have engaged well over 1,000 people in the community through surveys and town halls and online engagement. We have utilized nearly 130 people through the course of committees and task forces and focus groups. The effort has been led by BDS Planning, Brian Scott, Gabriel Silverblatt in particular, with Arturo Vargas as a local consultant who has helped us along the way. What you have before you tonight is the recommended final strategic plan. Much of it is unchanged or only subtly changed from what you saw in October when we last presented this to you. I do want to highlight for you that the vision is quite a bit different than the vision that was presented to you. I think there was some consensus that the vision just was too long and wasn't really working. It wasn't aspirational, it wasn't inspirational, and it sort of felt like it might have been able to fit any community. And what we have tried to do is to come up with something that is very forward-looking, something that is short, and we believe it inspires. We threw the word inspiring in, just to make sure, collaborative and caring city, inspiring an exceptional quality of life. The mission and values are unchanged since you have seen the document last. We remain with seven strategic priorities, city government capacity, city leadership, community safety and resiliency, economic prosperity, engagement, inclusion, growth and development character, and housing opportunities across the income spectrum. We have, there's the acknowledgements, those are the employees and staff and members of the community that helped us in more than just a passing way. Some have put in many hours to the process. I'll skip through all the process stuff and go beyond some of the goals and objectives, and show the other, the other part of the document that's new since you've seen it last is we've identified a number of near, mid, and long-term actions that are intended to be used to reach conclusion and to meet the goals that are identified in the plan. We expect these actions will inform the upcoming budget and future budgets, and will also be refined and discussed during the team building with the city council and the executive team later this month. Certainly going to give you a chance to make comments, ask any questions, but I want to get to a couple of the other things in the document that are new from the last time you saw it. Let me talk a little bit about economic prosperity. So there's a lot of stuff there. And our partners in economic development, particularly the MDA, MEDP, the Chamber and Visit McMinnville, have been strong partners in this work, and there's a lot of work for them and other private and nonprofit partners as well, and there'll be kind of a separate initiative specifically related to implementing the Economic Development Strategic Plan that we'll be bringing back to you in February, but we still wanted to show you the actions that would fall to the city under that economic development plan. Finally, I want to get to success measures, because one of the questions is, how are we going to know when we're making progress? And so, we've devised these high-level success measures. There'll be more things that are measured and reported during the course of the strategic plan. Each action, each project will have its own milestones and objectives that will be measured and reported, but we tried to identify some high-level measures that we could track primarily through community surveys. Four of those seven measures exist in the National City Survey that the city has done twice, so we've actually gotten some baseline data for a couple of these measures already. And the other three were crafted to be consistent with the approach in a survey, and we can customize that survey and do our own survey work in years when we don't pursue that National Citizens Survey work. So we will be reporting success measures to the council and the community as we move forward with the plan. The how and the when of that will be part of what we discuss during that team building exercise later in January. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about the document or the process. The executive team has done yeoman work, bringing this final product to you, and while they're not here tonight, we owe Brian and Gabriel and the rest of the team at BDS thank you for their good work as well. And with that, I'll turn to the council for feedback, questions, or comments. And ultimately, our recommendation is that you adopt the plan via the resolution that's before you tonight.
Great. I'll just share that Jeff and I had an opportunity to address the city club this afternoon at their January luncheon, and what typically we have done is the state of the city. We did an update because the state of the city is going to be held on the 29th of January, and Jeff gave the first four pages, the vision, the mission, and our areas of focus, and had some discussion. We passed that out to those that were there, and I think there was a good reception of that information and some good questioning around that. But let's open it up for any questions that anyone would have of Jeff. We've had an opportunity to talk and see numerous drafts. You know, for me, the exciting piece is then when we move towards our all-day goal-setting and planning and putting our focus around those things that are going to be deliverable in a short period, and then be able to work off of this in the long run, too. So I'll just open it up.
I appreciate the work that was done on the vision. I remember it was much longer before, and it was a little bit technical. I really liked the changes that were made. The one question I had was about the scorecards. I know that we had talked previously about concerns about having the scorecards be something that can be rolled into being relevant current measures instead of in the rearview, and I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about the process of coming up with these? And I know that you said that there will be more work done on these, and maybe talk a little bit about that as well, so I can kind of understand the full picture.
Sure. So we expect that a lot of these projects and the plan overall will be very data-driven and very focused on results. And so, these aren't the only things that we will measure and report as we move towards the plan, but we felt like for ease of transmitting particularly to a broad interested public, that really high-level measures that captured, captured the sort of the fundamental essence of the, of the goals at their highest level was important. And so, these success measures are intended to really be at that high-goal level, and the more you dive into the particular objectives and actions, there'll be other things that we measure and evaluate as we're moving through that work as well.
Organizationally specific, when we have specific, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or clarifying?
I did want to say I was very happy with the mission, or the vision statement. Thank you.
Overall, very happy with the strategic plan. It's been a long process, and thank you for everybody in this room and everybody that's not in this room that's participated in it. Jeff, on page 24, you talk about the business license fee helping with develop and implementing of coordinated onboard systems and onboarding systems. Going forward, once that system's up and running, what would that fee go towards there? Is it always going to be funding economic development?
So that's a potential project. You've had some discussions about business license. That hasn't been acted on yet and wouldn't be fully implemented or designed until it came back to the council for additional conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no other discussion. There is no other discussion. After we pass this resolution this evening, then will it go on our website for viewing to the citizens of McMinnville?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Good. Again, I'll ask for any other comments.
Are we seeking any feedback from the public in regard to this at this point?
It's up to you. You certainly are welcome to do that.
So what I will do then is ask for a motion.
I so moved that we accept the strategic plan.
Okay, so that's Resolution 2019-6. And a second?
Second.
We have Kelly that has moved and Wendy that has seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-6 passes unanimously five to zero. That takes us to advice and information items. And this evening, we have at your seats a report of assignments that have been given for our committee assignments for 2000. It says 18, but it really is 19 moving forward. And so have an opportunity to look at that. I've talked to some of you, and some of you I've just given assignments. Zach, you pick up on a few of the opportunities. I think as I look at this, new assignments. Adam, I've kept you with YCOM because of your being there. But I've also to you the airport, because I know it's been an interest to you to take Allen's place there. Zach, I have you under Historic Landmark. I think it fits well within your wheelhouse. And also Landscape Review Committee. I know that Kelly and I will be to all of those, because we love that committee. Also, I put you for MCM, because I know you have a good feel for that and have worked well with that group. And I think things remain pretty much the same from that perspective. Just a couple of items also just that we've not had on here before. Mid Willamette Area Transportation Committee called MWA. I have been nominated to serve on that, which is giving information to the Transportation Committee of the State of Oregon. So I will be representing Highway 99, 18, and 126, I think. And so I'd been the alternate, but now I will represent that, and I had notice of that given to me. And so I think that's kind of an overview. If there's any concerns on assignments, please feel free to talk to me. I mean, this can be moved and changed as we see fit.
I just noticed that the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, that there's no councillor assigned?
And, correct, because they meet by a board. But I meet with, well, there's this stable table which meets, and Jeff is a part of that. And then I meet with the director of that group on a monthly basis, as I do with the Chamber and MDA, so.
And Heather Richards is actually a designated board member for that organization. So she represents the city as a staff member.
As well as the Chamber. I mean, you kind of encapsulated in that answer, but I, as a citizen, fell off that board when my term expired in October.
And then, and again, Jeff serves on the board also as the ex-official to the Chamber, so.
And was councillor Peralta not also assigned to League of Oregon Cities?
I'm taking on the League of Oregon Cities, and Sal is doing the COG. And he's on their board this year. So in 2019, he goes on the board from that perspective. Okay, so again, just for information purposes, Wendy?
Did we have an emergency preparedness position or something last time? Haven't you been going to those?
Yeah, and so under Yamhill County Emergency, so down at the bottom, I still go to that. I'm very involved in that.
Yeah, because I know that that's a big focus right now. Okay.
Okay. So let's go and have a report from councillors on assignments. And I'll start with Adam. Any reports? I know we've come through the holiday season and a lot of committees have, just by virtue of people traveling in the holidays, we've not met, but anything to report?
We have our new CAD system almost a month in. Scott might share a little bit more about that when it comes around to him. And we have a YCOM meeting on Thursday. I missed my first YCOM meeting in two years last month. Other than that, that's all I got.
Great. Kelly?
We had a great Visit McMinnville meeting last month, and we have another meeting coming up next Wednesday. And then we're having a retreat on the 4th of February. They've got a great budget with all their finances lined out and seem to be progressing well. I think Jeff's going to be controlling most of the DMOs in the area the way he's going. So we're very proud of him.
Absolutely. I'll just share with you, I met with their committee this morning, which included the mayor and Dennis Lewis, who is the chair of that, and an individual from George Fox and Mike Ragsdale, and had a discussion about the process that we'd gone through. And Jeff had shared that, but they wanted insights from someone that was on council during that process. And so we had a very, very good discussion this morning. And as you know, we're willing to help any of our partners. The stronger we can have our communities around us, the stronger we are as a county.
Yeah, I think that's what's been exceptional about Jeff, is he's really been willing to step out of just his job as the main rep from the DMO and help other organizations to build up tourism all over the place. So it's been really remarkable to hear his progress.
Good. Wendy?
We have our meeting for MURAC this week, but we are looking at a couple of loan applications, one for the bindery and another we haven't seen yet, but those both look interesting. And we also are getting started. We have the contract for the consultants that are going to be helping us with Third Street, that we'll probably have more information from them this month. We haven't gotten it over the holidays. They haven't given us any information, but they're going to be starting to look at and evaluate the current conditions of Third Street. So those are the big things that are going on there. And I'm thinking about Visit McMinnville. I was thinking about the TEDx. You might want to say something about, that's a big deal.
It is.
That they put together, Jeff and his committee put together. Maybe you can talk a little more about that.
Lucky you, you got in. I think they're all, stuff's closed down.
They're sold out, yeah.
Yeah. Christmas gift.
Yeah, there are many things that we're just having great success with, and education and sharing the message is a part of that. Remy?
The McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force will be meeting at the end of this month at our regularly scheduled time. We did cancel the December meeting as it was the day after Christmas. And then the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee, last month, we partnered with the Ford Family Foundation to bring in a group which focuses on what's called strategic doing. And so our last meeting was actually this greatly expanded meeting. Many people in this room were there. And that, the group of 40 to 50 individuals, met in smaller groups to develop, I would say, action plans, but they're doing plans. So they're smaller steps that engage people quickly into action instead of writing the plan before doing the actions. And part of that process is called a 30-30 check-in. And so that time is happening right now. This 30, basically 30 days have passed. And so now these smaller groups are checking in to keep moving each of those individual projects forward. And then that committee will meet again regularly next month. And then, aside from that, our city manager was kind enough to ask the, or get the, work with the Chamber to have the city host a greeters meeting this past week. And there were 108 people in attendance, and we were able to present the overnight car camping program, which we're kind of, I guess you could say, rebranding to call a safe overnight parking program, more accurately convey the intent of the program. And so that was not only well-attended, but has started to produce some results already. We had another business step up to sponsor another porta potty. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say who it is yet or not, so I'll... So Adam Garvin stepped up to be a sponsor for our third site. And we had a private property owner, I was approached by a private property owner that's interested in engaging in the process. And then actually, while this meeting was going on, I had another business email me a request to meet and talk about being a potential site. And as well, the Chamber of Commerce has followed up and helped with some introductions with some other businesses for potential sites. We had somebody volunteer their time and equipment and skills to help make some video tutorials, kind of to tell the story, maybe the unseen story of what's happening in the lives of people who are experiencing homelessness, to demystify that a little bit. And so there have been a number of positive things that have come from that in a short period of time.
Excellent.
Thank you. Zach, welcome?
I'm doing great.
Good. And you've got your assignments, and we'll sit down and kind of acclimate you to that. Just some things that I've been involved with over the holidays. Had an opportunity to meet with the three-county area mayors. We have a Christmas get-together, and it connects the mayors in Marion Polk and Yamhill County. And it's just really good to be able to go and visit with that group of individuals and with that many mayors, having a light dinner and then sharing one thing that's going well within their community. And I continue just to be so blessed to be able to represent this community in the many things that are going so well. I can also share with you, and I'll keep you up to speed on this, but over the holidays, the Parkway Committee with the earmark of the $22 million from Governor Brown for transportation, it's in her proposed budget, so it's not a done deal. It still needs to go through the legislative process. But that's an additional $22 million for phase, well, for right-of-way and acquisition on the Parkway. As a committee, we have really taken a strong look at combining Phases Two and Three now. Phase Three is from the, where the fish hook goes over to Dundee. It'll continue paralleling 99 and come out kind of down by the vintage RV park at McDougal Corner. And that's a flat piece of land. It's agricultural. The cost to be able to do that is not near as Phase Two with all the overpasses and all the merging that needs to happen. So we're combining that, and ODOT's going to give us a number. We are going to be going to Washington, DC as a coalition to meet with our congressional group, but primarily with Peter Defazio, who is the chair of the Transportation Committee in the House and also in the infrastructure. And he has been a strong proponent. We're probably one of the most-prepared transportation projects in the state of Oregon. And so if the national, federal can come up with allocations to do those kinds of projects, we truly want to be prepared and have the design work accomplished and the right-of-way well down the path. And so we're putting a lot of effort into that with our lobbyists. And so more to come on that front. But we will be going to Washington, DC the end of February as a group to move that processing and get some buy-in from that perspective.
Mayor, I have one more thing I'd like to bring up. And I'll try not to keep doing this, but I just want to bring it up one more time. The Budget Committee. We are about five months out from looking at our budget very seriously. And what I want to recommend for all the councillors and the members of the Budget Committee, particularly the newly-appointed ones, that it's very important to take a look at this last year's budget, because there won't be that much change between this last year's and this year's. And be familiar with it. I would recommend, you know, looking at a section a night and reading, or a week anyway, and reading through it and getting a comfortable feel for what's happening within each department, because you'll be seeing that again in the new budget. When you get the new budget, it's huge and it's kind of intimidating, and you only have about, hopefully, two weeks to get through it. So read the prior year budget and be ready to hit the high points on the new budget. That is my strong recommendation to everyone. Thank you.
And Kelly and I will be available for anyone that would, and Marcia would be available to address any issues or understanding.
Now, if you have any questions or have any problems, please come talk to us, because we would be really happy to help you with anything.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's move to Department heads. Chief?
I talked with Susan tonight. We're going to be, or I will be with Susan's assist, putting downtown safety task force kind of wrap-up survey. It's been almost a year since we started putting some stuff online, so that's going to be coming out here within the next month. Kind of in a perpetual state of hiring right now. We've got somebody starting new on Monday, already at the academy. She's been there, done that, and will start training right away. And then we've got two lateral applicants out of state that will be coming on board, hopefully, as soon as their cycle and medical come through. So we are in hiring mode and training mode. We've got some people that are pretty close to be getting solo, too, so things are going okay.
Thank you, Chief. The other chief?
Mr. Mayor and councillors, to follow up with councillor Garvin's comments about the CAD system, I would like to acknowledge the amount of energy and effort that Scott and his team put into coordinating and cooperating with different agencies with competing priorities to look out for the city's interest and get us up and running on this CAD in a timely and in a significant type of an event of this process. There's always glitches and challenges, particularly with software that are interfacing with a variety of different of operations. And his team looked like several zombies for a while, walking around with the preparation that took place and the work that took behind the scenes that I had no idea was going to be required in this kind of a, I'm the idea guy. All the stuff that happens behind the scenes, those of us that are idea guys forget about that sometimes. And Scott and his team did an outstanding job on the city's behalf of getting us up and running in a timely manner with the least amount of problems and challenges. And that, we greatly appreciate the effort of him and his team. Secondarily, you were aware, or I believe I made you aware, that Chief Mount has tendered his sticky note resignation. The 31st will be his last day with the city. He is going to stay on contract with us for a part-time, just to keep us in the loop. He is going to stay on contract with us for a part-time, just to keep us in the loop, with providing some of his technical expertise and assistance, keep our billing operations and ambulance EMS functions flowing until we can get the position filled. On the point of the new operations chief position, we've run an advertisement. We received 12 candidates. We've narrowed down the field to five qualified candidates for what will be an assessment center, and then chief interviews the following day. I'm extremely confident that out of the five candidates that we have coming in to see us, that we'll be able to fill that position successfully. We've had candidates from all over the United States applying competition for the position.
Thank you, Chief. Marcia? Kelly?
Just to follow up on the recruitments that we have going on, we're going to have a couple more that come out of the water reclamation facility that we'll be posting soon. Rich has another position coming online, the Support Services Specialist. I want to commend Rich and Chief Scales for their Skype interview capabilities that he did this last couple of weeks. That was a big change, so it was great. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather, I know you're not at the table, but anything for us? Scott?
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. Just to follow up a little bit more on the CAD project that Adam started with and Rich took over and then spun it over here. It was very successful. It was a very successful launch. There are no major surprises. That's what we shoot for. There's lots of little things. Where we're at now is we're already moving to monitor improvements, like putting GPS antennas in buildings and new reporting for PD. And that's a great place to be when you're not fixing things two weeks later. Units are running, everything's running. And a lot of that really reflects that we have a really good partnership, I'll say a great partnership, with Wycom and the city, and also between our department and the Police and Fire Departments. And I would, you beat me to it, but I was going to specifically call you guys out and your departments and your strong support, because we wouldn't have been as successful as we were without you devoting your people and your time and your devotion to that project. So make sure, and we've passed that on as well, but you guys are just as big a part as I was in making this successful. I just want to make that very clear as well. But yeah, we had every unit up and running the very same day, all the data interfaces up and going. And I would point out too that Chief Mount was going to retire before the CAD upgrade, so we didn't scare him. And beyond that, the only other thing I'd mention is that over the holidays, in last year's budget, the council did approve audio improvements to this building, and those improvements were performed over the holidays. We basically replaced the guts of the audio system. So we haven't done anything with the visuals yet, but we can rest a lot easier with our, we have a new control system. We can safely say we ran the old one into the ground and then some. We got all the use we could out of it over nine years. We have a new networking in the room. We have new Wi-Fi. And the best thing to say about that is, I probably shouldn't jinx it, but we haven't had any problems with it. Nobody's even noticed. Sometimes that's the best place for us to be, is you don't even, we took the guts out of the system and replaced it, and things go on as usual. So hopefully we'll get another 10 years out of it.
Thank you, Scott. Susan?
Nothing else, thank you.
Mike? Melissa? David? Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, if you haven't seen it late before the meeting, you will see that we have canceled the January 16th work session. That may or may not give you a free evening. The reason we canceled it was in conflict, was it January 16th? February 16th? I'm sorry, the February work session was canceled in conflicts with the Mid Willamette Valley COG annual dinner. And I know that some of you have already signed up for that. More of you may want to go to that, get in contact with Melissa, and we can get you signed up for that dinner if you'd like to go support the council of governments. I have nothing else to report tonight.
Thank you. And then I'll just indicate that on January 24th is the LOC Day at the Capitol. And I know we have a number of councillors that are planning on doing that, and we may want to carpool going over there, but that's always a good day and being able to meet our senator and our representative. And the governor speaks to us and the, and the majority leader of the Senate and the House both speak to us. So it's an eventful day, especially in that this is a full legislative year. We're going to get a sense of what's going to be happening from that perspective. And like I say, I'll just throw that out. The COG, they've been very helpful to us this year and being able to go to their dinner, it's a, it's a great event. It'll be in the Salem area, but I'd, thanks for moving that off so that, and Sal is going on their board. I think it's a great way for us to support that. We have the cash and investment reports in our packet. And with that, I'm going to close our regular council meeting and then turn right around and open up our Urban Renewal Agency meeting for this January 8th, 2019. And we have one item of business this evening, which will be very, very much like our resolution of 2019-4, but we need to appoint members to the McMinnville Urban Renewal Budget Committee. And so as we have talked about, we will be appointing Jerry Hart, Cherry Haas, and Leanna Ghetri to represent the City of McMinnville, or the City of McMinnville on the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And so motion, we have a resolution number 2019-1, and it is moved by Wendy and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And this resolution, 2019-1, passes unanimously four to zero on that count. That takes us to the end of our Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And thank you, those that have attended this evening.